We're gonna do take two. Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Regular Meeting at the Maloney Magnet School in Waterbury. We'll begin this evening with a moment of silence, silent prayer. Commissioner Awad, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Commissioner Awad?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez? Commissioner Sanado?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Theriot?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone? Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Present.
President Brown?
Present. We have a quorum. Okay. We have a very special presentation this evening. Interim Superintendent?
Thank you.
Mr. Henry?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's my pleasure this evening to bring to you on behalf of the Board of Education, Melissa Bowwin and her team. We're in the process of, well, Melissa and her team have been spearheading a recognition ceremony for the efforts that many community organizations have put forth on behalf of our students with special needs. And so, we'd like to, at this point, call on Melissa to then recognize the organizations being awarded tonight.
Good evening Commissioners, good evening Superintendent. Tonight, on behalf of the Waterbury Board of Education, Waterbury Public Schools, and the Department of Special Education, I have the honor and privilege of awarding certificates of appreciation to community organizations who have provided years of outstanding assistance to our students with disabilities. These wonderful organizations include Abbott Terrace, Bell Academy, Brass City Charter School, Children's Community School, the Hispanic Coalition of Greater Waterbury, Nogtuck Valley Community College, and the Waterbury YMCA. Their employees, directors, and owners volunteer their time, guidance, and facilities to the Waterbury Public Schools, free of charge, as true partners in providing our students with living and job skills, career assistance, and new learning opportunities in our community. Our partnerships have endured over many years, and we formally recognize and honor all of you in your outstanding commitment to support our students in the Waterbury community. Our students learn a great deal from you and benefit from the experiences you help to provide to them. We thank you for volunteering your time, your staff, and your knowledge in helping us prepare our students for a life after high school graduation. As I call on your organization's name, please step forward to receive your recognition award. Abbott Terrace Healthcare Center, Ms. Rita Haddoo.
Oh, wait a minute, we gotta get a picture. Don't go away. Get a picture. Bell Academy, I'm sorry, Bell Academy, Mr. Michael Severino Senior. Brass City Charter School, Dr. Barbara Rogiro. Children Community School, Ellen Lynch and Catherine Sniffin. The Hispanic Coalition of Greater Waterbury, Mr. Victor Lopez. Nogtuck Valley Community College, President Dee Phillips, and Dr. Dresner. And finally, Waterbury YMCA, Mr. Jim O'Rourke. Can everybody come up for a quick picture, please? Recipients. Thank you. Sorry. Don't be shy. Let's give them another round of applause. Next, number five, Communications. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to receive and place on file, Communications, as noted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number six, approval of minutes. October 26, 17, workshop. November 2, 17, regular meeting. November 9, 2017, workshop. November 15, 2017, rescheduled regular meeting. December 1, 2017, Sheriff's Call. December 7, 2017, special meeting. December 7, 2017, workshop. December 14, special workshop. December 21, regular meeting. January 11, 2018, workshop. January 18, 2018, regular meeting. February 1, 2018, workshop. February 13, 2018, workshop. And February 15, 2018, regular meeting. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the minutes as listed.
Second.
All in favor? I'm sorry, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next part of the agenda, could I have a motion to go into public?
Motion to suspend the regular order of business to hear from the public?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Thank you. All speakers are encouraged to submit prepared written statements to the Commissioners. Comments shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes. There will be no responses this evening to any questions or concerns raised. They will be referred to the Administration for review and response. And we take all of your testimony very seriously as a board, and you will hear from the staff and board members. First on the agenda is the Greater Waterbury Scholarship Committee, Sal and Company.
Hello, my name is Sal Diaz. I came to you two years ago.
Pull up, pull up another chair and sit down. And, and please speak into the mic so we can record you.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sal Diaz. I am the Executive Director for the Greater Waterbury Scholarship Program here in Waterbury. And I came to you three years ago asking for help, and you helped us by letting us use Rotella. And we crowned our first Ms. Greater Waterbury, Ms. Nogtuck Valley, Ms. Nogtuck Valley's Outstanding Teen, and Ms. Waterbury's Outstanding Teen. And Ms. Nogtuck Valley's Outstanding Teen is our current reigning Ms. Connecticut's Outstanding Teen, Brookley Steer. So she came from here. Here comes Ms. Greater Waterbury. So we wanted to come and thank you again, because this year you did let us use Rotella Magnet School to have our third, our second annual pageant. And so, we appreciate you guys. So I'm just gonna have the title holders introduce themselves.
Thank you.
Until you leave the platform.
Hi, I'm Lindiana Frangu, and I'm Ms. Greater Waterbury's Outstanding Teen. My platform is breast cancer awareness. So I really work with teens and adults and families and help them cope with breast cancer and help them kind of express themselves through, like, small groups and talking about their family member that has breast cancer. And I just explain how you could cope with it, because I went through the same thing with my mother. Thank you.
Wow, beautiful. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michaela Barrows, and I'm your Ms. Southberry 2018. My platform is helping special needs children express themselves with the use of animal therapy. So I work on a farm, and we use the animals, and we take them to schools in Prospect, which is my hometown, as well as Southberry. And we do a lot of fundraising for those children, because most of them are a part of foster care. So not only are we using the animals to help them, but we're also raising money for them individually. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Danielle Radicki. I'm Ms. Greater Waterbury 2018. I actually traveled all the way from New Jersey to be here with you guys today.
Well, thank you. We're privileged.
Yeah, we're very thankful for everything you've provided our scholarship organization. So how could I not be here today? My personal platform is the Ronald McDonald House Charities. That is an international charity that provides a home away from home for children who are staying in the hospital and their families. It's expense-free, they pay if they can, but usually there's no charge added to their stay there at the Ronald McDonald House. So this involves me volunteering my time at the Ronald McDonald House in New Haven and going to any events that they might be holding and fundraising and raising awareness for what they have to do, especially since I get to see the effects of it as a soon-to-be nurse. Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much. I know this is a public comment, but any Commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam President. We don't normally speak back to the public. Ronald McDonald House. A little over two years ago, I had two premature twin grandchildren born. My son and his wife were able to utilize Ronald McDonald House to be close to the hospital. My Commissioners aren't usually, they don't usually see me get a little choked up. I'm the tough guy in the group. But Ronald McDonald House is high on my family's list of charities. I don't wanna just point to one of your charities. All the charities are great. Ronald McDonald House is tremendous. They had a beautiful place to stay near the hospital while the twins developed. They're now over two years old, and you would never know the difference.
Thank God.
So, thank you so much for that charity. And it does, I actually tapped my heart when you said who you represent. So thank you so much.
And thank you again, just so you know, the Ms. Connecticut Pageant will be held here right in Waterbury at the Palace Theater.
Really?
June 5th and 6th. 5th to the 9th, so it's the 8th and the 9th. And so, maybe one of these three will be crowned our new Ms. Connecticut, our Ms. Connecticut Outstanding Teen. We did bring you a little box of candy for all of you to thank you.
Oh, thank you.
The mom has them, so we'll just leave them right behind.
Okay.
Thank you.
And best of luck to all of you.
Thank you again for your generosity.
Very inspiring. First on the agenda is Stacy Broadnax. 166 Tudor Street. Am I saying that terribly? Broadnax? Okay, Broadnax, okay. Stacy, okay. Please speak in the microphone and give us your name and address, please.
I'm Stacy Broadnax, 166 Tudor Street, Waterbury.
Richard Atson, 166 Tudor Street, Waterbury, Connecticut. We came here today to discuss some questions and, you know, give you guys a little rundown of what's been going on with our daughter at Reed Elementary School. Back in September, kids are joking about a teacher's skirt. She responded to my child, you know, after, told her to stay after class, responded to her with inappropriate behavior, saying, you know, "If you have something to say about me, I can say something about you." From there, we said something to the school. As the head principal, there, to me seemed like he really wasn't trying to do anything about the situation. So then, months are going by, months are going by. Every day, our daughter's come home telling us she's having a problem with the same teacher, same teacher, same teacher. She's dreading going to this class. So again, we reach out to the school, ask them to do something about it, see if we can get a meeting to figure everything out, what's going on. In the meeting, the head principal never showed. The teacher came and again was very unapproachable, very disrespectful to my wife, and then walked out and never wanted to talk to us again. We haven't had a conversation with this teacher about my daughter since that meeting. With that, we felt like the principal wasn't gonna do anything, teacher wasn't gonna change her, her attitude. We went to the board, have a meeting. With that, not knowing that they were going to bring us to the board, we thinking that the principal's gonna have a meeting with us and the teacher to solve this problem after I talked to him. But then, out of nowhere, he just called us saying he was going to the board to have a meeting. When we get there, they pretty much just ignored our complaint of this teacher bullying our child and basically tried to turn it around and had statements from the staff, staff of the school stating that my wife threatened her and all of this other stuff, trying to basically keep whatever this teacher did under the rug, not address the problem.
Let me, I could have better explained, I'm sorry. Okay, so, piggyback off what he said. Basically, after numerous complaints, going, you know, going through every channel, trying to contact the principal, the principal, I made my first request during that first meeting with the teacher. In the first conversation, I realized she was unapproachable over the phone. It was a phone conversation. So I requested that I speak with the principal, with, with both the principal and the teacher. He never responded back to me through Class Dojo, this app that they have for parents and teachers to communicate. So from there, time goes by, and I'm, you know, Dojoing the teacher. I'm asking her, you know, "Hey, how you doing? I wanted to know what's going on with my daughter." She's like, "Oh, first off," she's, basically, every approach I've made with this teacher, she was always nasty. So I got to the point where I'd rather go to her supervisor. I spoke to the supervisor, which agitated the teacher. And then, from the teach, talking to the supervisor, I told her what happened with my daughter and her cornering my child in the corner, putting her hand in her face and said, word for word, "If you have a problem with what," basically, she said, "If you have something to say to me, say it to my face, because I could say plenty about you." Then turned around, from there, constantly called my daughter crybabies. She refused to allow my daughter to participate in class. If she raised her hand, she ignores her. She broke my daughter down numerous times in class. One occasion, she broke her down so bad, my daughter begged to speak to a supervisor, to a school counselor or a social worker for a good 20 minutes until she finally broke my child until she cried. My daughter picked up the phone to call me to come get her, which the teacher went and did was called school, um, social worker and said, "Come get disruptive child out of my classroom." Then from there, my daughter got in-house suspension, got her off of the wingman program, which she was being bullied at one point. So she wanted to become a wingman. She got taken off every program possible because they kept finding ways to get my daughter in trouble. So moving forward, I got five minutes. I'm trying to give you months of information in a, in a bunch.
Not sure.
Yeah. So moving forward, I made so many complaints with the staff of, you know, at the school, so I've decided to go to the board. So I talked to the board. They had me under the impression that they were trying to help me with my daughter's issue. To find out, they had a previous meeting, days before they met with me, with the teacher. She gave them this whole story about how she feels threatened, she's hurt, she's in danger of her life. She feels that after all the school shootings, which I feel is a shame that she would use these school, this children's situation to use for a platform. And she said she feels in danger. We went to court. This lady took, this teacher, Ms. Bramble, decided to take statements from different people of the school and say that I harassed her, I tried to hurt her, I said these things to her. The judge saw right through it. They found so many loopholes in the stories that they didn't even compare, because I addressed all the issues she brought against me. That was thrown out. After I said I wanted to meet with her, again, they told me that I was barred from the school. When the bar didn't help, she tried to get protective order against me, anything to keep me out of my child's school. Next thing you know, after this happens, the day after, we go to court, school was canceled on March 13th, no school. I get a phone call from Marion Merrill telling me that my daughter was transferred without my consent or my knowledge, not even a letter. And I said, "Why are you guys constantly protecting this teacher?" When I complained about her the last time, know what they told me? Find a way to have your daughter get along with this teacher, because she can really help her in all her, her future endeavors. She has her hands in a lot of pots, and if she really wants to go to Career Academy, have her be nice to this teacher and get along. But yet and still, you're telling me to tell my daughter to accept abuse, to get what she wants in life. That's not acceptable. I want to know who's gonna be accountable for this teacher's behavior.
And if nobody believes, we have my daughter right here. She's willing to tell her everything that she goes through. She's, that's why we're here, because she's willing to fight the bully.
And at first, I feel, I'm, I'm upset, because in the beginning, my daughter came home from school and told me this was happening. I said, "Baby, maybe you're being a little sensitive, you know, maybe she's a little tough teacher." Because I'm a tough parent. When my daughter does something wrong, or if she's wrong about something, I make her own it. And I address it. And I'm always involved in all my daughter's education activities. I was not able to pretend bingo now. I might attend to certain things that she's involved in at school, because they kept me from there, because I was concerned about her, her well-being. Then... This woman tried to cross me my job. This woman sat here immensely and verbally abused my child. And every time I make a complaint, these people, Mr. Mendoza and Ms. Thomasella knew from the beginning what was happening. And every time I asked to speak to somebody, it's, "Oh, we're busy. Leave a message or ask to schedule a meeting." But never, nothing was ever done. And then when I finally go ahead and go to the Board of Education, the first thing they do, they, they stabbed me in the back with the same hand they shook with me and told me, "I'm so proud of, I thank you for being an involved parent. We wish we had more parents like you, just to sit there and have me, try to get me arrested and kept out of the school." And I want to know how...
Ma'am, if, if I may?
I'm sorry.
No, no, no problem. I appreciate your, your comments. And so, I know a little bit about it, in terms of what has transpired, where we are today. I know that there've been attempts at addressing and ameliorating it, but I'd like to have the opportunity of chatting with you subsequent to this meeting, or based on an appointment that we can make, you know, for tomorrow, whatever is convenient, so we can address it away from this forum, in a way that we can get some of the facts on the table and be able to address your daughter's education going forward. All right? So I'm going to ask Mr. Schwartz if he will assist me with taking some information that would allow me to be in contact with you.
Yes, sir. Well, I have one question, though.
Sure.
What am I supposed to do about her school? Because I never transferred her to North End, so I'm not gonna send her to North End. Do I continue to keep her going to...
If you just do me the favor, I'll chat with you even tonight.
Okay.
And Mr. Schwartz will help me gathering the contact information, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sandy Genoa? Or is it Sadie?
Sandy.
Oh, okay.
Hi.
Please state your name. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Sandy Genoa, and this unfortunately is not my first time coming before you. Tonight, I'm here to address a situation that has been brought to my attention regarding recent budget proposals for changing our ABA therapists and their contracting for the city of Waterbury. When the city made the decision in 2016 to remove IEP and replace our program with Easter Seals, I can tell you from firsthand experience, this was not beneficial to our students. The thought process at the time was meeting the needs of all special needs students, not just those with autism. We suffered through three BTs prior to hiring our current BT at the Buckshill School. While our current BT is wonderful with our students, she does not have the support that we had available through IEP. This decision was sugar-coated when presented to myself at the time the IEP's contract was not renewed. I was given constant reassurance that we would have one BT with two BTAs to support the needs of both the primary school and the pre-K. This never happened. And our BT is currently split between the pre-K program at Buckshill Annex and the two classrooms that are currently at the Buckshill School. How is this conducive to the needs of each child we support? When IEP was in place, David Galloway, Dr. David Galloway, had an assistant with only 10 students supported at Duggan and 10 students at the Buckshill Preschool. And yet, we now have one BT who is supporting two classrooms at Buckshill and the entire preschool special needs program. Our students who suffer, that's probably the wrong choice of words, I apologize. Our students who live with autism don't learn the same as a typical special needs student. Their needs are different for each child. Sounds, smell, lighting, environment, all affect their level of learning. Where does this leave families? We are now left with a decision to fight for our kids, to get them out of this environment that is no longer meeting this needs, and into a system that is. I ask you, Board, how many special needs students are we funding at surrounding towns because we cannot meet their needs locally? I want you to think about that question. How many students are pulled out of the Waterbury school system and put into outstanding towns, surrounding towns, that we're currently funding? And how does this affect our budget moving forward? Our students are the ones without voices. They are the quiet, small majority that affect our school, and yet their needs are far greater than the average students. Unfortunately, since my son has started in the Waterbury school system, we have continuously been failed. We've had 14 behavior therapists, 10 speech therapists. We've lost an IEP program, three BTs. The first year Easter Seals was contracted in 2016 with no support BTAs. Our city is great for giving us what we want to hear in the moment, but disappointing with following through. We are a city-school system filled with empty promises and unresolved issues. How many parents and students have stood before you, meeting after meeting, complaining about the lack of services that are provided to their children with special needs, no matter that need? I will leave you with this final thought. I'm a taxpayer in this city, one of the highest taxed cities in Connecticut, and yet our school system is one of the lowest-rated schools. How embarrassed... How embarrassing as a taxpayer. How is my money being allocated if my school system has to cut funding that directly affects special needs students to meet budget requirements?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the, uh, the, uh, public speakers is Margaret O'Brien.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Margaret O'Brien, twenty-two Malone Drive, Unit Four, here in Waterbury. I received many texts and phone calls since last night late and this morning from parents in response to decisions made without discussions regarding their concerns of their special children. Regarding behavioral therapists, paras and aides being removed or reallocated, reassigned to another company other than the school system, just didn't sit well with any of them, nor myself. I guess it may not seem too important to some of you that you would be willing to interrupt a day in the life, which is very sensitive to our many special students. A day you yourselves have never experienced, a blind child, a deaf student, a classroom of autistic students at different learning levels. These wonderful adults bring calm to the parents knowing their children are in capable hands. How can you be so insensitive? Many parents call these staff members their angels. They're able to go to work knowing their child is in school in incapable and loving arms. I hate to be so bold, but if you're going to mess around with this type of removal of budget funds and keep cutting and keep cutting, then why not just go completely further and shut down the entire school system? Place all of our children in other district schools since they seem to be having no problems. Save more money and only pay for busing and per-child cost. Wouldn't that eliminate our entire problems here? We wouldn't, we wouldn't need a Board of Ed or any staff. You wouldn't have to be worried about a new superintendent coming in, or let's face it, the responsibility that we vote you into to handle and take care of our children, especially our special children. My personal and final word is that if this does move forward and you keep cutting funds to our children that are special, that have no voice as other regular ed children do, then I will be behind every parent that needs me and I will be at every meeting and I will be fighting with the laws at my side to protect them and get what they need regardless of your cost.
Good evening. Melissa Stark, uh, President of the Waterbury City's Employees Association, located at sixty-five Bank Street here in Waterbury, second floor. Good evening, members of the board. As I said, my name is Melissa Stark and I'm President of the Waterbury White Collar Union. And I'm also an ABA behavioral therapist with the city. Tonight you will be presented with proposed cuts to the fiscal year budget, which includes the elimination of elementary school attendance counselors, the elimination of two reading clerks currently, um, listed as admin specialists, and also the privatization of forty behavioral therapists. As you can imagine, I am extremely concerned. I am concerned, first, that the city's proposed costs and savings may be misrepresented. Just to begin with, the therapists and attendance counselors are not fifty-two week employees. It is my understanding that this is, the number is based off of fifty-two week employee that is, um, being presented to you. I am, however, optimistic to be able to sit down with the city, to look into this matter further and to discuss it with them further. On a more personal note, I would like to take a moment to talk to you about the ABA behavioral therapists. Many, including myself, have been with the Waterbury Autism Program for over ten years. We have dedicated ourselves to servicing students with challenging needs on a daily basis. A job that mentally we carry home with us and doesn't just stop when we punch out. We review the day and how it went, different strategies we can use the following day when we return to work that might be more beneficial to the student. It's more than just a paycheck. It's a commitment and dedication to servicing the students of autism in Waterbury. So what it was said last night at the Board of Ed Financial Committee meeting, that the behavioral therapist sitting behind this individual was like family, it's true. Now on paper, it may appear that the privatization plan, we will be just able to shift right over to the private company. However, many behavioral therapists are providers to their children and their spouses. They depend on the city's medical benefits for themselves and their family. Many private companies do not provide these medical or any other benefits, and that is why sometimes privatizing is cheaper. This alone could ultimately force the behavioral therapists not to be able to shift over to the outside company and private company. When employee turnover rates increase, consistency decreases and stability and consistency of service decreases. As you heard earlier by a parent, the turnover rate at a particular school with behavioral therapists that are privatized is extremely high for the school year. This consistency is extremely important to the success of children with autism in Waterbury. And that's what behavioral therapists, the many of my coworkers, have provided in their ten-plus years of service to this single Waterbury Autism Program. Social services offered by the government is by far for the people, not private companies that are built on profit. I strongly encourage the board not to substitute experience and consistency for dollars. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Warren Leach.
Could you repeat the name?
Warren Leach.
Uh, good evening. My name is Warren Leach. I thank you for allowing me to speak to you. Um, I'm also here in support of the Broadenax family who you just heard from. And I, uh, I'd like to commend the board for taking an action, you know, at, at this meeting. I know that's not usually done, so that's, that's good news. Since I'm here, I mean, the, the Broadenaxes, they, they articulated the problem pretty, pretty well. So, you know, I'll be very brief. There, there are a couple of things that are problematic beyond what brought them here. One of those things is that the, the teacher in question attempted to use civil court to bar the mother of this child from school, separate and apart from the administration. And had this mother and father not been engaged, they may have accepted that decision and allowed their daughter to be put in a school that, that, that they did not want her to be in. Further, the re, the way that I got here today is this is not, I don't have kids in the school system, but I'm running, um, a financial literacy program out of the WOW NRZ Center, and Marlin is a student of ours. And I, my observation is that she's, uh, she's bright, charming, engaged, and willing to learn. I didn't see any hint of disrespect coming from her. That's just, that's a brief observation of mine, but, um, you know, to have a child removed outside the purview of the, the, um, the administration and, and official business of the office, that's problematic. This mother, this mother was contemplating leaving the city. She was going to leave a job that she just, when she went to school to become a paralegal, and she just got a good job, and she was contemplating packing up to leave the city. You know, that's a problem for, for a teacher to try to use civil courts to bar a mother from seeing, from, from the school where, um, her daughter's attending. Um, and since I'm here anyway, part of my issue in, 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 in support of them is that the school book, the school handbook itself has no guidance or process spelled out for the arbitrary transfer of a student against the will of the parent. So that should be addressed or either amended so that there is some. Because she got a phone call after, immediately after court was over, where apparently, I wasn't in court and I wasn't at the school, but apparently the teacher falsely accused her because the judge, the reason that the judge threw out the, the case was that the, the statements apparently taken from the other, uh, her, her colleagues were in conflict with each other. And it further speaks to, you know, the problem because none of those teachers felt that the threat rose to a level for them to actually be in court. So all of this is separate and apart from you guys' governance, and that's a problem. That, that means you have teachers out there making decisions, you know, about how to manipulate parents, you know, and unbeknownst to you, and you should want to know that. So, um, you know, that's pretty much all I have. Again, they articulated their case pretty well. Um, you know, we, we want, um, part of our grassroots group is we, we want to support people in, in every way. My interest here, I don't have kids in the school system. My interest here is to try to work with people. I know some of the people on this board, and I know you're good people, and I know you're going to take care of this particular issue. So I want to thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Reverend Pamela Hughes.
Pamela Hughes, eighteen forty-four East Main Street, Waterbury. Thank you so much for allowing me this time. I, um, just want to share with you, on Saturday, March third, I attended a community youth open forum, um, which was entitled, uh, "A Discussion on Recent School Violence: Giving Our Youth a Voice." It was held at Triumph Community Outreach Church, um, which is located at one twenty-seven Scott Road in the city of Waterbury. Um, and the pastor there is Pastor Terry Holmes. Ari Smallwood was, uh, the forum leader. During that, uh, time, uh, people were brought together, the community was, were brought together along with, of course, the youth to discuss the recent, uh, violence that we, um, saw that happened on February fourteenth. And one of the things that came out of, uh, that discussion was the concern for our schools, our public schools, our schools in general. And we wanted to know, uh, what is in place regarding active shooters? Because we know that sometimes, you know, we think that it may not happen to us. It only happens in the, uh, in suburban America, but we just don't know. So the question is, what's in place? Have you taken a look at, um, if you do have something in place, have you taken a look at it recently to see, you know, if it would actually work? Uh, I know I've been part of a lockdown, and I can tell you that our students need to be talked to when it comes down to lockdown. Because when you say, "Be quiet, don't have your cell phones out, don't do this, don't do that," some of them, not all of them, do the opposite. So I believe that with the climate that we are in now, that is, it is imperative for our schools to have these drills more often, for there to be assemblies. When I went to school, we had assemblies, not necessarily for active shooters, but every now and then we would get together and we would have an assembly to talk to our children about expected behavior, about if this happens, if that happens, what is supposed, what's supposed to go on. I don't see that. I don't see that. I, I don't know if it happens, but I have not seen it in my experience with working in the schools. So I'm asking you to please review it, please go over these types of things because don't count on it just being, it happening over there. We just don't know. The other thing I want to bring up in my last two minutes, I think I have about two minutes, is the test scores. What is going on? What's going on? So many things have been tried, so many people have been put in place, but yet our children's test scores are below acceptable. I mean, it's, it's embarrassing. It really is. It's embarrassing, and we need to do something about how we can get our children learning again, how we can get them excited about learning again. We need to make learning fun for them. Sometimes you have to change what you're doing to make them, to help them, to understand that learning is great. So I'm just asking, how long are we going to continue this? How long are we going to continue to allow our test scores to be like this if we just sit here and we just do nothing and we hire people to help and nothing happens? Nothing changes? How long are we going to keep doing this? Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, uh, next person is Nicholas Kling.
I have a, a few copies of this, so, just in case anyone wants them after I'm done presenting So, my name is Nicholas Kling. I am the son of Eileen Kling, who works at Carrington School for the city of Waterbury. I am an eighteen-year-old man with odd, who suffers from autism spectrum disorder, which heavily affects my social skills. I was in the Applied Behavior Analysis Program, where I was taught and assisted by many ABA behavioral therapists and paraprofessionals throughout my time at Bucks Hill Annex and Generali Elementary School. I graduated out of the program in the third grade, although I had the same privileges of being in special education, until I promoted from it in the ninth grade. I'm here to talk about our current state of the education system in the city of Waterbury and maybe the entire state of Connecticut. Our government is considering a process of outsourcing, meaning that they want to try and find, uh, find other employees that are cheaper to pay for, causing other employees to reapply for their jobs with only a chance of keeping them. I feel as though that this is a bad idea because of the many wonderful people that work in the education field, whether it be in special education or otherwise. Throughout my early years in school, I have worked with so many wonderful teachers, ABA therapists, and paraprofessionals who would go on to change my life for the better. One I would take the honor of mentioning is Ms. Kara, who introduced me and my parents to Special Olympics, where I can compete in sports as well as be surrounded by people just like me. She takes a lot of passion and love into her job, and she has inspired me to grow in so many ways. I feel as though outsourcing would waste the potential and spirit of many who work in the field, such as my mother. Much like Ms. Kara, she takes a lot of pride and joy from her job and loves to work with people that have special needs, ranging from autism to bipolar disorder to Down Syndrome. She was inspired to go into this field because of me and my experiences, as well as what Ms. Kara and others have done to help me shine and grow into the person I am today. We need to stand up against this move, and I would love to see other children get the same amount of love and support from others like they have given to me. These stories, among many others, show potential and promise that these employees have working in the field, and I would hate to see that all go to waste. These workers have done many wonderful things for children, and I would love to see them inspired in the way that others have inspired me. That is why I take a stand against this matter, as I care for the jobs of many wonderful teachers, ABA therapists, and paraprofessionals that continue to strive to make a difference in the lives of many children. If not them, then who else will fill that spot? Employees who care about labels and numbers rather than making these kids happy to go to school every week? Believe it or not, you never know what they could be going through, so any form of positive energy that they could get could make a big difference for them. I would love for you to take these words into consideration and stand up for those who continue to strive and blossom at what they do best. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1787.99] I know sometimes it's hard to come up here, but you did an excellent job. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Helen Taylor. Good evening.
I'm Helen Taylor, 1046 Cook Street, Waterbury. I'm here in support of the behavioral therapists, ABA therapists, who are sitting in this room, as well as others. I received texts and phone calls today while I was at work, and I had no idea what's going on. Outsourcing. Outsourcing means you just put a price tag on all our children's heads, that you're saying that money is more important than our children in this Waterbury school system. This Waterbury school system, which is a failing school system, and you're going to cut more from our most vulnerable citizens in this city. As many of you know, I am a co-founder with my husband Alan of the Autism Speaks Walk. We've been here for nine years. I am the CTFE Board President for Families for Effective Autism Treatment. I am also an Autism Speaks Ambassador for the Legislature, which I will be corresponding with Congressman Estee. So I'm very much involved, and I get a lot of phone calls from parents throughout the state because they know I'm an advocate. So, the thing to me is that, the behavioral therapists, and I know three of them in this room, who helped my child Chase, who's now eighteen. I've been in the system for more than eighteen years, but for special needs, they have been amazing. I can attest that they have saved my son's life. You want to talk about angels? They are angels, and they're committed. So, outsourcing means that somebody is not doing their job, or you're saying money's more important. I think they are doing their job, and they work very hard, and they're very committed. And I'm a very honest person, and I know the school system needs a lot of work, and a lot of people on this board have been on this board for a long time, and I have not seen a lot of changes with the school system, and it is embarrassing. And I have my son go through, one son had, went to public school here, parochial school, and private school at Chase Collegiate, and back to the school system. So I know what works, and I know what we're not doing. But the behavioral therapists have brought my son from being not very social to now being an author of a book. He's now part of the National Honor Society, and that was with commitment and love from our behavioral therapists. So what are your, what are your plans for outsourcing? Who's going to oversee it? Who's going to make sure that our children are, have a fair chance in life? We have an idea that we, our children are allowed to have appropriate education, and to cut something from our most vulnerable citizens who don't have a voice is heartbreaking to me. Our most vulnerable citizens. Meanwhile, we could pay for other things in this city. I don't understand that. It's not their fault that they have special needs. They didn't take a pill and something happened to them. They were born. This is what God gave to us. And you're saying what God gave to us is not worthy of the city's commitment. Our behavioral therapists make a change, they're trained, and they try to seek training, even on their own, the city does not help them to get training. I know many of them go out on their own time, on Saturdays during the week, to learn more to help our children. Outsourcing, I have spoke to many parents who've had outsourcings in other cities, and they said it has not worked. It has not worked, that it declined. If you get a decline in the city, we will come together and talk about an exodus from the city, and going to outs, to out, outsource to other school systems, since you're saying that they are better, which they shouldn't be. My son Chase was said, "Do you want to outsource?" And I said, "I should not have to outsource my son from the city of Waterbury. You should be able to provide what he needs to be successful in this city." He's still in the city. So you're saying that, you know, you love the Ronna McDonald House. The BETs are our Ronna McDonald House, and that's how passionate us parents are about them. And I'm not staying here, I, you know, very rarely you see me, but I'm very passionate about, every single person who's in this room has made a change. And I just don't understand, like, what is your plan? Who, who is the person you're going to outsource to? What is their success rate? Is their data proven success for these children? Are you looking at all that? Are you engaging parents to review this? Have you gotten any feedback? Does it, are they state-approved? How many hours are they going to work? How many children per behavioral therapist are going to have? What changes are you going to make for our children? And I mean our children, I don't mean just my child. I'm just broken-hearted here, as a Waterbury citizen, who I try to defend and try to say, "I'm from Waterbury and I'm proud," but right now, in this room, I'm not. How dare you people do this to the behavioral therapists who have families in it, who are committed, for a dollar? They're not a dollar, our children are not a dollar. Thank you. And again, behavioral therapists, stand up everybody, behavioral therapists. They are our Ronna McDonald House. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shannon Balthrow. I live at 240 Chestnut Hall Avenue in Waterbury, Connecticut. I'm actually reading this letter on behalf of Mrs. Margaret Cattso, who was a pre-K teacher at Driggs Elementary School. She couldn't be here tonight because she's ill, and she asked me to read this on her behalf. Mr. Herman visited my pre-K classroom at Driggs on Tuesday morning, March 6, 2018. Mr. Herman asked me if I had a problem with my outside door, and I replied, "No." I said, "Mr. Theriot wants me to move my classroom upstairs. He asked me if I knew what my old room was going to be turned into. I told him no, because everything in this city is a big secret." He agreed. I'm guessing the room should not have kids in it because of the door leading to the outside, and then the library would have to change also. He said he was going to check out the room I would be moving to. I heard he wasn't too happy with the utility sink in the hallway next to the room I would be moving to with the cleaning chemicals and bottles, seeing as I have pre-K children. That's another story. Wednesday and Thursday, we had snow days, and Friday morning, Mr. Theriot came to my room and said, "Starting Monday, March 12, 2018, no parents would be allowed to drop off or pick up their children on Irving Street. When I asked why, he hemmed and said in a lackadaisical way that he should have done it a long time ago, but never got around to it. To me, this statement didn't sound too serious, or pressing, or having to do with an immediate safety issue. I advised him that it doesn't give the parents much notice, and parents will not be happy. It didn't seem to have an effect on him. His secretary reluctantly drew up a notice in English and Spanish. I was concerned with the arrival in the front of the school at 8:05, with the latecomers entering also. It was not in the best interest of my two, three, and four-year-olds. It did not go smoothly. There were so many parents who wanted to know why it changed, some couldn't find parking spaces, and there was no one to answer their legitimate concerns. The secretary told them one thing, another office staff member told them another thing. Parents, some parents got told it came from downtown. When one parent asked from whom, she didn't know. One parent couldn't find parking, so he went back home. Now his little girl was marked absent. It was a mess. Dismissal of AM at 10:35 was just as bad. Arrival of PM was even worse. Parents whose kids were late because of parking were let into the building and told to bring their kids down to the pre-K classroom without any visitor badges. It was a breach. Dismissal of PM on the blacktop was the culmination of disaster. As I'm walking out, one little boy became so anxious because it was different to them, he pulled his hood over his head. Another little girl said, "Wow, Ms. Cattso, there are a lot of big kids out here." I hugged both of them and reassured them they'll be safe. Parents could not find their kids, we did not have any place to stay. The parents are very concerned about the health and safety of their children on rainy, snowy, windy, and cold days, standing out there. What happened to kids first? There was no procedure in place, and Mr. Theriot was out of the building for the day. In addition, I don't know what transpired when you, Mr. Herman, looked at the room to where I will be moved in August, but many of the parents of the students I teach this year will also be the parents of the students I will teach next year. They have many concerns about the classroom the pre-K will be housed in next year. There's only one entrance to the room. In case of a fire, and the main door cannot be reached, how do we exit the children? Also, in a fire drill, there will be classes coming from next door, the kindergarten hallway, upstairs, the first-grade hallway. This is terrifically overwhelming for three- and four-year-olds. In the room we are in now, we have an exit. The students are not intimidated or overwhelmed by hundreds of bigger and more vocal students. Is it about safety or money? The present pre-K room has served its constituents for about twenty years, Mrs. Capaldo, Mrs. Rinaldi, and now myself, Mrs. Cattso. We have more safety control in our present space than in any other room in the building. Why jeopardize what works? Change does not always make things better. I see people making so many decisions for all the wrong reasons. I don't want this decision to be one of those wrong decisions. It involves our youngest and most vulnerable students, and I will protect them with my last breath. Sincerely, Mrs. Cattso.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dawn McLan, and I'm on, I'm here on behalf of the PTO for Driggs Elementary I'm also coming before you with the same issue as Ms. Balthrow. We were notified on a Friday that as of Monday, our children will no longer be allowed to enter through urban street side. The problem that I see with this thing is, when the children are exited, they are exited through the cafeteria, which also has after-school coming in at the same exact time. You've got all the big children running, 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 as children do. What's going to happen if one of our children get hit or shoved? As it is, our children have to go from the classroom clear across the cafeteria into a bathroom. When I asked Amy Sims, "Why wasn't a bathroom put closer to the classroom," which, because there is one, what I was told was, "We're putting that into play, but we've never seen nothing happen." Okay? I have numerously times have asked Amy Sims to join PTO meetings, I have asked Amy Sims to come, let's resolve situations. Numerous, numerous times, I have been ignored, or was told, "We'll be there, we'll be there," and never came. Okay? I went to Mr. Theriot, and I had asked him, "Don't you think this is a very bad idea, dangerous idea, first of all, to bring children through a crowded cafeteria, I'm sorry, and out into a blacktop with the bigger children?" His response to me was, "I don't see there's any danger involved." Yes, there is. I seen it. I seen children melt down in the hallway going in. I seen children coming out scared to death. I'm there, I watch, I see. I'm there in Driggs trying to fight, we're the PTO, we're trying to fight for everything that's better for Driggs. I, if you tell me it's a safety reason and you're locking us down for safety reasons, I, you know, I would not argue with you. But you did it within less than seventy-two hour notices, with no room to see where anything, where the children, if there's any harm to any of the children. Ms. Balthrow's son was going in the hallway on Monday morning, as we had to go through the front of the school. He had a meltdown. Unacceptable. My granddaughter was lost. I was talking to her and she was just like in a daze. This is all news to these children, not once was the parents notified. Do you think this is a good idea, or what do you think? Ms. Balthrow was willing to pay for a camera to be put on urban street side out of her own pocket. We were told that wasn't a good idea. I had the Safety Commissioner come to one of our Board of Edges meetings, which I had a couple of your commissioners at. So, you know, safety is an issue to us. It's a, it's a very big issue to us. And we're not only fighting for that, we're fighting for things going back into Driggs School. We're, we're fighting for better for the children to want to go to school, the initiative to give these kids, like, you know, you come to school, you're good, this is, well, you know, it's going to be your reward at the end of the year. So it's not like we're not trying to sit here and we're not trying to fight for these schools. And, and I'm grateful that, you know, all schools have to have PTO, because sometimes you have to have that extra voice. But right now, we're talking about three- and four-year-olds, two, three, and four-year-olds. What's going to happen to them? And like I told Mr. Theriot, if one of them children do get pushed or shoved, if you think your parents are being irate now, they're really going to be irate, because no one wants to see their child pushed or shoved. If you're going to make these changes, all I ask is that these changes are being made with the children, and taking the children into consideration. Is this a good move for them? Or let's do more than a seventy-two hour notice. All these decisions, when they took the half-day pre-K from us, from, you know, from half-day, you know, pre-K, it was within less than a seventy-two hours. We fought that, we got it back, I thank God for that. I'm not an ungrateful person, I thank God for any help that I can get for anything. Okay? But that's in less than seventy-two hours. Now you lock down urban street side where these children are used to going in and out in the mid of the school year? You couldn't have took that into consideration for next year, give them a chance to grow into it? And then you expect two- or three-year-olds to sit there? I, I, I can't say no more about it. I think it's a bigger issue, a safety issue for these children. I personally see it every day, I think it's a bigger safety issue. And then, just like the Reverend was saying, we need to get these children to where, and I said the same thing, like, get Heritage Knife back, get, you know, Zumba back, get something for these kids to look forward to in this school. Make them want to go to school. All of that has been taken from Driggs, all of it. I have been on a PTO before, I've served on a PTO before. I have a granddaughter that's going into ninth grade, I served on a PTO when she was in the fourth and the fifth. We had all that in our schools. It seems like our school is going underneath the map. And us as PTO, we're trying to bring it back above, because we care about the children there. I care if the children are irate, I care if the children are being good, I care if the children succeed. I brought in safety coordinators, I brought in Officer Lamones, which is the community policing. I've asked for a walk-through, Officer Friendly walk-through, I've asked for a lot of things for that school, and I haven't even been to PTO for not even three months now. But I thank you for hearing my concerns, I just don't think that decisions should be made for pre-K, especially pre-K, because it's hard enough for them to adjust without less than a seven, you know, more than a seventy-two hour notice. Thank you.
Okay. Hello, my name is Maria Selley Medina, I live in 396 Como Avenue. I'm here, I'm shocked, first of all, because this is the first time I hear this, I'm here on behalf of this ABA program. I'm not going to say too much to you guys, because you hear a lot of things. I want to ask you guys, if you've got a kid with disability, you don't be fighting like me, because now I've got one, I've got two boys with autism, and I don't even know what I'm going to do if I don't have those BETs right there. When they get a cranky, and I can call, and they come and help me, I inviting you guys to go one day to that school, and be a BET for one day, and see how they struggle and helpful they are, because they did for my two boys with their, I've been in this, from, my son is eighteen and sixteen, so I know them well, I can see. So I inviting you guys to think about it. It's not just me, it's a lot of kids. And it's so sad, when they ask me, "In what school do you kids are?" And I say, "Waterbury." And you hear from other towns, they don't have the same benefits my kids had. And now you guys want to cut that? It's a shame for me, because I need to be here fighting for them. Pretty soon, they'd be twenty-one, and that's another story for me, but right now, they're in Waterbury, and I need to fight for them. If they need me, I'll be there twenty-four-seven, and I need to be there behind their back to helping them too, because they're the ones, they were my boys, every single day, Monday to Friday, and helped me. And I inviting you to be one of my son, Carlos Medina, and Ms. Laura knows how he can be, and she helped me really good, and right now, Carlos in a better mood. So that's the only thing for me. I'm not going to say too much. I inviting you guys to go one day to the school, and be a BET, and you guys going to see. Thank you.
My name is John Theriot. There are two John Theriots. I'm not the guy that locked the door. President Brown, Superintendent Henry, Honorable Board Members, ladies and gentlemen, parents, and overall concerned citizens. Well, just when we thought we were in good financial shape with the ECS, the Educational Cost Sharing... Cost Sharing, being the same as last year, and the Alliance Grant being increased by $2.5 million, among the other numerous budget proposals being presented, we now have a new idea to reduce the Board of Education budget. The new idea is to riff, lay off, dispose some of the special education aides, namely the ABAs, with outsourcing. With a new company coming in, hiring them, all back at the same pay, benefits to be determined, retirement to be determined, other fringe benefits to be determined, and they will be reevaluated after six months to determine if they should continue their employment with the new company. What a kick in the teeth for the most dedicated employees that deal with our most fragile students, and have given decades of service to the city, and provided outstanding service to our special needs students and parents. Furthermore, the proposal indicates elimination of 27 library aids or pages to achieve further savings, another slap in the face. Who will be monitoring the book exchange and assist students in finding reading material and research for reports? Or will the media specialist, who has paid $70,000 a year, be required to do this function and pick up the slack? It seems ironic that the city can spend millions of dollars on the new public works facilities, and additions to municipal stadium, renovations to the green, renovations to downtown buildings, reduction in taxes in the hopes of drawing business and industry to the city of Waterbury. But once again, the city has decided to flat fund the Board of Education budget, and I believe it's about eight years in a row. The BOE, or Board of Education, is short $2.5 million after transferring $2.5 million from the Alliance Fund Grant. The Board of Education still is short funds to balance the budget, but the city will not provide the needed funds. Forcing the Board of Education consider these outrageous alternatives. We have spent millions of dollars on the Blueprint for Change, the ILDs, and additional central office staff, and numerous supervisory positions through the last six years, leading to no significant improvement academically. Now we are considering cutting the lowest-paid, most dedicated, hard-working employees, thus penalizing and punishing our most vulnerable and fragile students. Granted, there may be sacrifices that need to be made in a tight budget, but I am sure there are alternatives that might be considered in order to balance the Board of Ed budget, and not sacrifice some of the most valuable employees and special needs students that they service on a daily basis. This is a heartless proposal. It is full of uncertainty and deception, and a fool-hearted solution that we may regret in the years to come. Trim the fat in the budget, not the dedicated employees and students that are most sensitive and vulnerable. We, as a Board of Education, seem to have lost focus on the things that are important in education, and now considering monetary solutions that could be disastrous to our special ed students, our special ed staff, and our parents. I will continue, I hope this board will have some foresight here, and not be judged later by our lack of compassion and caring. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak? That's okay, she'll bring the list now. She'll bring the list to you. Thanks.
My name is Cheryl Seager. I'm an ABA therapist from Waterbury for 10 years. I live at 64 St. in Nagatuck. We've heard tonight from people who've talked about the impact these cuts would have on our children. And I say "our" children, because even though these are not my children, I consider them to be my children. I take pride in every accomplishment, every, every little step these kids take has such an impact on me, that I feel privileged to work with them. We've heard tonight about the impact these cuts would have on our kids. I want to talk a little bit about the economic impact, because I realize that money has a lot to do with this decision. My dad had a saying, he said, "Don't be penny wise and pound foolish, Cheryl. You can make cuts, but these cuts are the wrong cuts." Forgive me for a minute. These cuts would have a serious impact on our kids. I understand cuts have to be made, but we've all made cuts in our budgets. I've made cuts in my budget, you've made cuts in your budget. They have to be judicious cuts. These are not the right cuts. They may save, they may save money in the short term, but in the long term, our kids, our kids, I'm claiming your kids, I'm sorry, I'm claiming your kids tonight. Our kids would suffer. Our kids would suffer, and it's not fair, and it's not right. Thank you. Thank you.
Simona Kultur.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Simona Carter. I live at 168 Malloy Road. I have a dual concern here. I am an attendance counselor for the city of Waterbury, and I'm also a parent of a student who goes to school at Crosby High School. The reason I'm here today is because someone needs to fight for the attendance counselors, and I will be that person who will fight for them. We work hard. We do a tough job. We go out into homes where no one wants to go. Most of the time, we go by ourselves. We never know what we're going to encounter when we reach those homes. But when we go out to those homes, and we speak to those families, we speak to their heart, we speak to their kids, and we try to get them any assistance that they may ask us for. The job as an attendance counselor is a very hard job. It's a thankless job. And it's also a job where we do well for the school system, and we do well for parents, but we also cause a little bit of strife for parents as well, too, when they don't send their kids to school. The attendance counselors in elementary school, that is a difficult job. I worked that job for two years, and it's a heart-wrenching job. And the attendance counselors who work elementary school, they work hard for those children, and to remove them from their jobs, you're going to see an increase in students not coming to school. Because they're going to be looking for Ms. Diane, or Mr. Davis, or Ms. Mildred, or Ms. Stacy, someone to come to outside of, you know, the school social worker, anybody, someone they can have, someone they can come to and say, "Ms. Diane, I had a rough night, this is what's going on, this is why I was not at school yesterday." And then Ms. Diane, or Ms. Simona, can call their mom or dad and say, "This is a concern for your child, is there any way that we can help?" Although our job is to get kids to come to school, which we do, but our job also is to help them stay in school, help their families, help them do the best that they absolutely can. And as attendance counselors, that's what we do. The name is deceiving. It says attendance counselors, but what we do is not deceiving. We are straightforward with families. We give them whatever they need, we help them in any manner they could. If you remove the attendance counselors from elementary school, who is going to do that job? If you put the parent liaison in that role to address attendance, their job is to build bridges with families, and get them into the school, where our job sometimes causes stress, and we, the parents don't want to come to the school, because they know Ms. Simona, or Ms. Diane, may have to make a referral to Waterbury Youth Services, issue a ticket $25 for every day the student is out of school, or possibly file a 136. This is what we do. And there are times where, as a parent liaison, you may not want to do that, because you are trying to build a bridge with the families and get them into the school. And our job as attendance counselors sometimes is not, we don't do that. We try, and we do the best that we can. But if you remove them, you're going to see your attendance for elementary school children explode. You definitely will. Because there is no one going out who's going to knock on those doors, who are going to go to streets and places that nobody wants to go. I would like to see anyone go by themselves to Shelley Street, the dead-end portion of Shelley Street, by yourself, with no, all you have with you is your cellphone, to do a home visit. And then you get there, and people don't want you there, so they sic their dog on you. So when you, you still do your job, you still knock on that door, you still deliver that information. But I would like to see any one of you go there, do what we do, and tell me how you feel when you come back. Do you feel accomplished? Do you feel like you got the job done? Because that's how we feel. We feel like, you know what? Yes, it was a risk, yes, but did I get to where I got to? Yes. Did the child come to school the next day? Yes. Or did the child come in an hour after we left their home? Yes, that does happen. Because they know that we care. Regardless of what our, our titles say, or what we have to do, or what our letters look like when we send them out, we care. And we get those students into school, and whatever services we need, no matter how we have to get them for them, we get them for them, so the kids can continue to come to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Erizari.
Hi. Good evening, my name is Jessica Erizari. I'm a behavioral therapist for the city of Waterbury. I was just notified, notified two days ago about the budget cuts, so this came as a shock to me, and a shock to many of us behavioral therapists, that our positions were probably going to be relocated into a private sector. I can say that I think that it's a wrong choice for the city to try to privatize this position as a behavioral therapist, because many of us, we've developed relationships with families, and it's not something that you can just switch up and change up in a matter, you know, overnight, or in a matter of days, or even months. For many of these kids, we've developed relationships with these kids over a matter of years, from the time that they've been in preschool, all the way up, that we've grown relationships with these families and these students. And to strip us away, and to bring in a private agency, or to even put us down into a privatized company that is not going to provide, probably not going to be able to provide the same services that we are going to be able to provide, that you hired us to do, the same level of care is not going to be the same. These kids, these parents, we love them just as much as they love us. Even more, you know, like, y'all can't, I mean, there was one of the parents that said, "Come down, come and look, come and see, because that's the only way you're going to see it. Come down and look and see. I invite all of you to come down and look and see." The, the relationships that we establish with these kids, the things that we're able to do, things that cannot be accomplished in a regular, traditional class, you, you look at regular, you know, kids that, yeah, they get traditional grades, they go on, and they, they get their grades, but when you're dealing with kids that deal, that, that live with autism, it's a whole nother world. Y'all don't understand that. And so to make these changes, make these cuts, if you privatize it, you're going to have a decrease, or you're not going to get the same level of care for these students in a privatized company that comes in to service these students. It's not fair to the student, it's not fair to their families, it's not fair to the community. I live here, and I, I work here, and my community is important to me. I want to see all these kids succeed. And I hope that you all feel the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Naomi Pitts. This is my son, Thomas Russo. He is 22 years old. He's been in the school system, sent with that, mostly that whole back half-corner for years. And I just want to say that they do an amazing job, an amazing job that a lot of you don't see, a lot of you don't witness. And some years ago, my son wouldn't even be sitting here, just quietly sitting here, based on how the help that they provide, and what they do for these students, and how they, they can change and turn a life around. He is so much more well-behaved now, based on having that therapy, that ABA, that one-on-one, everything that the, that they can provide for my son, he's got. And I love them for it. And yes, they are angels. They are angels to me, they're angels to my son, they've helped my son, he's risen above and beyond. A lot of things that even doctors said that he wouldn't do, and he's doing those things. So I really thank God for it, I really thank God for them, all of you in that back half-corner over there, that no Thomas. I really, I thank you, and I, I thank you, and I just hope that you, I hope that you can please find it in your hearts to, to understand where they're coming from, that they, they need this, both the therapists and for the children, the children do need this. It is a great help, it's a tremendous help, and I'd hate to see it go. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Thomas. Thank you all very much. Could I have a motion to return to the regular order of business?
Motion to return to the regular order of business?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you.
Motion to convene an executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, health or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. We will go into executive session?
Motion to return to the regular order of business.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We have returned to the regular order of business. For the record, we have received another testimony from Denise Ferrier for the record. Okay? All right. Number eight, deputy superintendent's announcements. I believe you're...
Yes. And so, to the Board of Commissioners, I'd like to request that the report that I've provided be one that is taking the place of the actual statements that we made tonight, and it be a receivable filed document, which I think each one of you has.
Motion to receivable placed on file superintendent's announcements for March 15, 2018.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. There'll be no president's comments tonight, except for, I want to thank Commissioner Sweeney, and Commissioner Hernandez, and Commissioner Stangle for attending a very wonderful cave day on the hill. We had students from all of our high schools, right Commissioner? We had students from all of our high schools, right Commissioner?
Crosby, Carrier, Willby, and Kennedy.
Right. And they did us proud and we had a great day up at the Capitol. So I want to thank commissioners for coming and for Commissioner Sweeney for organizing it. I would like to move to the consent calendar. Would like, would anybody like anything removed from the consent calendar? Could I even mo, okay. 10.1, committee of the whole requests approval of the 2018-2019, 2019-2020 school year calendars. 10.2, request approval of a student interim affiliation agreement with Southern Connecticut State University for speech-language pathologist interns. 10.3, request approval to apply for the CSDE 2018 low-performing schools bond-funded grant applications. 10.4, request approval of an agreement with Pediatric Services of America, Inc., PSA Health Care to provide nursing services as required by Students' IEP. 10.5, request approval of an agreement with Train USA, Inc. for chiller service for service maintenance for district Hy-Vac chillers. 10.6, committee on school facilities and grounds, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. 10.7, committee on school facilities and grounds, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests.
Motion to approve consent calendar is read.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next, committee on building, Commissioner Van Stone, Jason Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President. With the approval of the committee on building, the deputy superintendent of schools recommends the approval of the SCG-042, which is the request for review of final plans for the Chase Elementary School Elevator Project, state project 151-0299-CV, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Commissioner, I mean Vice President Harvey.
Thank you, thank you. I, I was unable to attend this meeting due to another meeting. So the question is, this, I'm happy that we're going to get an elevator in Chase, and I know Sprague is next. How close will this elevator be to the ramp? Can anyone, for, for both, both schools? The question is, how close will this elevator be to the ramp? We'll talk about Chase, and then when we talk about Sprague, I'll ask that same question.
Okay.
You may answer for both if you have the information.
Well, if you're on, if you're on Meriden Road, facing Chase that way?
The Chase, yeah, the Chase, Chase is different from Sprague.
It is. The Chase has a little bump out with the overhang.
Right.
It's not going to go there, it's going to go between there and the door that's used to exit students that are walkers. It'll be in the front of the building, and we will build a ramp to it.
Okay.
Sprague, we'll also, it'll go on, if you're facing the Sprague main door, it'll go around the left side and run up that side of the building. And a ramp is part of the plans there also, with, with rails to hold on to. Both, we're building a ramp on both.
Good. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. 12.2.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the committee on building, the superintendent of, the deputy superintendent of schools recommends approval of the SCG-042, also requests review of final plans for the Sprague Elementary School Elevator Project, state project 151-0297-CV, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Number 13, committee on finance, Commissioner Awad.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the committee of finance, the Board of Education authorizes the deputy superintendent of schools to transmit the 2018-2019 Department of Education's budget request in the amount of $163,306, 163,306,190 dollars. Been a long time since I remember that.
I think you should say that again. Three times past.
As it appears in Exhibits A and working towards a reduction of $4,931,190 as outlined in Exhibits B and C to the mayor. So moved.
Second. Discussion. Commissioner Van Stone. Tomas.
Tomas Van Stone, thank you. Thank you, Madam President, through you. This is always a difficult time for this board when we do the budget. And of course, this is just step one of around three, if I'm not mistaken, for us to move this forward, as we said, as opposed to approving. I always have a number of issues with the budget we put forward. And we certainly heard a lot of discussion tonight about decisions we have made, which maybe tonight, what brought about the decisions may not be heard tonight, but may in the future. I will point to things other than what we talked about tonight, where we typically spend money that I'm not in favor of. I will say I'm in favor of the fact that we're looking to no longer support the ILD program. I think we have made some good choices on where to spend that money as opposed to where we have been spending it. I, I still have difficulties in the money we spend to the Palace Theater. We entered into a long-term agreement to utilize the former St. Lucy's School, which I have great difficulties with. And it's a lot of money that we spend on things that we shouldn't be spending on. So although it's only a procedural vote tonight to move it forward for the next step, I still have trouble supporting what we are about to move forward. So for a number of reasons, I, I will, as I usually do, not be in favor of the budget we're moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Awad.
I just want to be clear tonight, too, that tonight we are forwarding the, the budget request over to the Board of Alderman and to the mayor's office for consideration. It does not mean that this is set in stone. It has a series of ideas and suggestions as how to get to a bottom line. And again, I recognize the concern that it has raised amongst the folks that would be most affected by some of the suggestions in this. It is, again, a proposal. There will be an opportunity to take a number of avenues to determine how we're going to move forward in achieving those reductions. If there are other suggestions or creative ways people have with coming up, with getting us to that bottom line that doesn't impact the kids in the classroom, as we have always maintained, then I think we should hear them out. And again, I think that some of the changes, specifically the changes in central office, while some of you may not agree, I think they're a long time coming. I think that the level of accountability belongs at the level of the superintendent, and now we've cleared the path for that. I've always advocated for that. And the level of insulation to get to the superintendent, I think, has been removed. And I'm very pleased with that. I also like the fact that half of the savings we generated in that move are putting things in the classroom. They're putting math coaches, they're putting additional ELA facilitators. It is affecting the classroom, and that's what we've advocated all along. So I appreciate the anxiety that we've created in the room for some of you. It is not a done deal. There will be opportunity to continue the discussions and, and look at avenues to obtain the savings we need. But again, the, the end game of this is to do better for the kids in the classroom, to provide a better education, to John's constant point, to improve our test scores, and to hold ourselves and the people that deliver those services to those kids accountable. And there's a level of that in here. I like the fact, the fact that we're changing the role of the department head, and we're going to start to hold department heads more accountable. I love that. Okay? I like the fact that we are looking at transportation issues, maybe being a little bit smart about it. We have a competitively sought-after pre-K program. We have five buses that take 20 kids to cla, 18 students to class. That's a lot. If they're, if a parent wants their child in there, they'll figure out how to get them there. So again, there's some things in here that we're challenging ourselves, we're challenging the community. But in the end, what we want to do is challenge our kids in the classroom to do better. And I think this does, it, it starts the com, the process of getting us there. Let's see what, where this goes. And I plan to support sending this across the street.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. Having been through seven or eight of these now, it's never an easy time for us. The costs to put together a district of our size each year keep going up. The resources to supplement those don't always go up at the same rate. So every year we have decisions to make. And they're generally not easy ones. These are people's lives, these are children's educations. At each time, we make one of these decisions at one of these meetings that we are impacting. I don't think any of us do that lightly. In general terms, I think we've worked well through this budget cycle. I have to thank the folks on the committee, Kathy, nice job leading that. I'd like to thank Mr. Henry, everyone down at central office. I think, I think this year I, I felt kind of a different approach to the budget, one that I appreciated. And I, and I think, I think a lot of it put the child first, which is something sadly, we don't often have the opportunity to do. A lot of times, dollars and cents drive every decision. And I think this year we were able to make some changes in that, so I appreciate that. That being said, not everyone will be happy when this is finalized. And to Commissioner Awad's point, today is the first inning of a long negotiation. So whatever happens tonight, in all reality, it's a formulaic motion to just send it from our desk over to the mayor's, the final words will not be made tonight. Negotiations will continue. Maybe our friends at the state will find some money and help us alleviate some problems. That has happened in the past. Maybe events on the ground will change our perspective and decisions are made and changed there. But in general, I'm, I'm happy with a lot of this. I would agree with Commissioner Awad that I like, I like us spending more money on the classroom level, getting back to the schools. While I was never one to really subscribe to the idea that we were incredibly top-heavy at central office, if you look to other districts our size, when you have only so many dollars, I'd rather put as much as a percentage of those as I could, directly affecting kids. So I think this, this will be a good change, I believe. I was a fan of the ILDs. When Dr. Roulette rolled them out, I thought we needed to try something new. And it was always with the understanding that if, at some point down the road, we believed changes were needed, that we would make those changes. So I don't think this is an indictment of any of the people who've held any of those positions. I think that this group, leadership, simply says we need to try something new. And, and I think that will be the right approach. So I think there's more in this first draft of a budget recommendation than I like, than I don't. And that's why I will support sending it over to the mayor with the understanding that we will continue to have a voice in the process as it works over on the other side of Grand Street, as it makes its way through the Board of Alderman to make sure that we, the Board of Education, make sure that the decisions made going forward down the rest of the path continues to fo, voice of God, continues to focus on the student. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Adorno.
Thank you, Madam President. First and foremost, I just want to give you guys a round of applause for speaking up today. We, I think we appreciate, you know, hearing from the audience and having a large crowd. So thank you for that. Obviously, I know a lot of faces here, so I understand the importance of the BTs and stuff like that, having a child on the spectrum. With that said, I do want to reiterate, you know what Commissioner Awad and, and Commissioner Van Stone said, that this decision that we are making today is not a final decision, and it's not going to impact our students. It's, again, it's not a definite decision. It is just like a rough draft, so to speak. And we're just trying to seek the opportunity to look at all the possibilities to perhaps achieve, you know, working towards a reduction. So as Commissioner Van Stone did state, hopefully, we find other solutions. I think a lot of your testimonies today may, may possibly make a difference in moving forward and, and further discussion. So just so you guys are aware of that, again, I appreciate the time you guys took away and to talk today. And, and this is just a recommendation that we just all have to take into consideration. So moving forward, again, I just want to thank you guys from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you. Commissioner Sweeney.
So the role of the Board of Education in a, in the realm of budget is to give a number to the city that we agree to meet. That's where we're at. Line item, power sits with this board. We decide what we spend the money on and what we don't spend the money on. So what we're doing tonight is notifying the, the mayor and the Board of Alderman of the, of the number that we agree, that we believe we can meet. That's what goes forward from here. From my perspective, we have just barely begun the conversation on how we are going to get to that number. There is nothing yet in stone that we are doing anything with. It is a discussion. And it's a discussion that still has many weeks to go. I look forward to that conversation and that continued conversation. But it is a discussion that we have just begun. I appreciate that we have people from the public here. And we always say this when they, when they come out in droves. We wish we would come out every time like this. But continue to follow us because we have a lot of work to do here to get to that number. These are not easy times. I was up at the state Capitol today, and I can tell you that the news is not any better than the news that we heard about a month ago. There is not any more funding coming from the state, there is not any more funding coming from the city. We are going to have to sharpen the pencils and do the best we can with the funds that we have available. That's going to take a lot of work. So I look forward to that, for coming, coming forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President?
Thank you. Perception is everything. And I understand fully that the perception in this room is that we want to cut the ABA therapists. That weighs, you know, we can have every commissioner talk about this, but for me, that weighs very heavily for me. I, I want to thank everyone for coming out and letting us know, you know, exactly how you feel about this, this budget. I think you need to keep our fees, our feet to the task of making sure we communicate with you at every level what we plan to do, you know, with this item. I know it's been said a number of times tonight from you that this affects our most vulnerable segment of our student population. When I see Helen Taylor come out and speak on this, she's speaking as everyone is, but I know Helen, I know about, you know, her son. And yeah, that, that hits home because I know. So I So I want you to know that we're going to stay on top of this, and we're going to look for alternatives. One of the things that we really need to look at, although I applaud the cuts that have been proposed in regards to central office, because I believe that we were top-heavy, yes, we did try something, but we see that through test scores that it didn't work, all right? So we're cutting, you know, pretty much the bureaucracy that was created in the hopes that we can get back to getting those finances back in the classroom and to our students. So I feel good that we've made those cuts, but I feel that there's more that we can make in regards to central office, and that we haven't looked at that further, so I hope that we can do that. So right now, I'm not sure how I'm going to vote, but I just wanted you to know how I feel in regards to, you know, your coming down and speaking to us, and I think you need to keep our feet to the fire with what you're hearing tonight and the commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to say that this is, oh, did you want to speak? Commissioner Stango, go ahead.
I don't know if you want me to go before the President goes.
No, I'll be the last one.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I will vote tonight to move the budget along, as I always do. I do have concerns, however. We have many loose ends to tie up, be a lot more work to do, many more questions that need to be answered. I'd like to also say that I do have issues with the reductions. I have questions on the reductions, including questions about the ABA therapists, and also questions and concerns about eliminating the ILDs. I also have issues with the reorganization of the reorganization of central office. Seems like what was old is becoming new again, and I thank you.
Thank you. Any other? I would just like to comment before we vote that it is a perfect storm, as Commissioner Sweeney said. We were handed a deck of cards that said, "Cut your budget $5 million." And before you was the hard work, and I want to thank Commissioner Awad and the Finance Committee and staff who spent hours poring over the budget to see where we could cut without hurting students. With that said, I personally feel that we need to look more across the board and not target one group of people that has hit the most. And personally, and this is my own personal commitment, I will not vote for any privatization contract that does not include benefits for, and good wages for the people in this room. I don't believe in privatization. As a nation, it's a race to the bottom, it's all about corporate profits, and I won't go on my soapbox. But philosophically and morally, I don't believe in privatization because it always hurts workers. So I will do whatever I can to preserve your jobs, and if we do move forward with a contract to privatize, I will not vote for any contract that does not give you wages and benefits. And with that said, could I call the roll? Commissioner Awad?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Serena Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Theriault?
No.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
No.
President Brown? Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, next is the superintendent's notification to the board. Can I have a motion?
Motion received and placed on file, Superintendent's notification to the board, Item 14.1 through 14.7.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Number 15, unfinished business of preceding meeting only. Okay, 16, other unfinished new or miscellaneous business. Commissioner Theriault.
I was rather elated to see one of the speakers come before us tonight and once again speak about my favorite and most passionate topic, test scores. Recently, we got a report, this new report, and I have it memorized. It's called "The Next Generation Accountability Index Report." And quite honestly, to be kind, I'm trying to be kind tonight because I don't lock doors. To be kind, this report does really not do enough in terms of enlightening us and pointing out to us and clarifying the test results in language arts, math, and science on the Smarter Balance Test, the Scholastic Aptitude Test, and the CMT Test. It incorporates some of that data into the report, along with graduation rates and about 10 other various criteria, some of which are very redundant. And at the next meeting, I'll supply a report with the 12 criteria, and you judge whether or not you think this report really does the towns and cities in the state of Connecticut justice, because I think it's a fallacy. I don't think that it really shows how the towns and cities, especially the largest towns like Waterbury, Hartford, Bridgeport, New Haven, doesn't show how we're really doing what our score is against the state average. To give you an idea of how bad we actually did on the Next Generation Accountability Index Report, only four schools out of 29 passed the state average. Now, on the Smarter Balance Test, the Scholastic Aptitude Test, and the CMT Science, not one, not one of our 29 schools, not one succeeded in achieving the state average. And that's including our magnet schools, all of our new schools, all 29 schools in the city of Waterbury, not one passed or achieved the state average. That is abominable and dismal. But I am not discouraged. I'm not pointing out these things to be negative. I'm pointing out these things, so we will be courageous, and we will put some things in our classroom, as are in this budget, in math, in language arts, and hopefully, as we go in the future, we can do more to approach these sub-basement test scores. So, but I do want to take this opportunity to thank President Brown for acquiescing and allowing us in sometime in April at a workshop and a board meeting to look closer at these test scores so that we can preview them, identify our weak areas, identify our strengths, and there are some schools that are very close to those average. All of our magnet schools and some of our new high schools are very close to those state But when you see a score, and I use this over and over again because I think it should be a red flag, I think it should be a wake-up call. When you see a score, it crossed me, on the CMT score in science, when you see a score of 2.6, 2.6, just saw a lady say, "Oh, my God." See, most people don't know. And by the way, you know how long it took me to get this data from central office? One month. One month. I'm a Board of Ed Commissioner. Took me one month. You know how long it took me to get five pieces of paper on the ED 006? I'm a Commissioner. Six weeks. I finally had to get it. You know how I got it? I had to file an FOI.
Commissioner Theriault, if you could.
No, I'm not. I'm just getting warmed up.
Is this other unfinished new and miscellaneous business?
This is all unfinished business, as far as I'm concerned. And I had to pay $4.50 to get those five pages. It's not the $4.50, it's the mentality of preventing board members from getting data and information, but I will not be stopped. My report is done after one month of constantly prodding central office who wants to tie my hands behind my back and make me swim the English Channel. And I'm up for the game. I'm ready to go. Let's dive in the water. They don't want you to know because they're embarrassed. I'm embarrassed. But thank you, President Brown, for addressing the test scores sometime in April at a workshop meeting because I think it will be completely edifying, encouraging, and I know Commissioner Van Stone, I know Commissioner Harvey's and all the other board members here are equally concerned about these things. You know, it's funny that some board members ask for data and they get it in a couple of days. I ask for data and it takes weeks, but that's all right. I got a bigger shovel. Thank you very much for listening to my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
I'm going to continue, and I don't know if the fact that I'm going to concur that us as elected officials are not getting the respect we deserve, is that a preceding meeting or is that new info? I'm not sure. So I'll, I'll take it that it's new.
Through the chair, it's been pretty much this last year.
Well, ironically, my subject is similar but different, and that is our search for a new superintendent. I spoke before to Board of Alderman on not wanting to raise the salary limits, and I also was misrepresented at that meeting by our HR department to say that our inclusion at the final 10 was a voting member, and I never said that. I've always said we should be able to be there to observe, similar to what we do at interviews now, and I never got a response to my email up until we received an email saying that basically I'm no longer allowed to email the HR director. So I'm not sure what it means to be an elected official anymore. If I question a city employee on inclusion on something, I think I deserve an email response back, but the email we received back was, "All further correspondence from commissioners should be through the President of the Board."
Do you mean to civil service?
Our HR director of the city of Waterbury, not the Board of Education's HR director.
Oh, okay.
The city's HR director will no longer honor emails from commissioners, elected officials of the Board of Education, and they must come through the President of the Board.
And if I, can I respond to that? I don't agree with that.
Well, I didn't see any acknowledgement that backed up the fact that I should be able to request that information. It pretty much just was in my email basket, no further communication took place. I truly feel that us as a board should be able to have some representation at that final 10 prior to the final five, and for an HR director to tell me I no longer can email him, quite honestly, it may make me email him more often. So I think we as a board need to stand up to that and be inclusive in the process that we have been pretty much eliminated from, so thank you.
Just a point of clarification. My point of clarification is that we were told through you, President Brown, that in the future, in order to get data, it would get, we would get it from the committees or the subcommittees, or that when we requested data and reports, we should do so through Mr. Henry, Mr. Schwartz, and Bob Brinker. I've been doing that for the past two months, and nothing has changed, absolutely nothing has changed. Personally, the only one I think you need to go to is the clerk of the board, and the clerk of the board should pass it on, as she always has. So everyone knows how I feel about this new edict of passing out information. I think it's anti-FOI. I think it's, if there were a piece in the Constitution, I quote that, too, but certainly I think it's a roadblock to communication, and it creates a dysfunctional board. Thank you.
Okay, we did executive session already. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.